My pleasure. My pleasure. This is a flag in the United States of America. In this republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have to delay it?
Apparently. All right, public comment. And they have public comment there? Anybody online? No?
You're good?
Okay. My pen's not... There we go. All right.
Before we start, I just wanted to say that I think it's really unfortunate that we are having a meeting on a holiday.
Oh, you know...
You know, and I just wanted to just say it so that we maybe keep that in mind for other meetings.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, and it didn't even occur to me until today that it was a holiday. Yeah. Yeah. If my wife was alive, I would have known it, she would have reminded me because, you know, it's her holiday. But you're right, no, I appreciate that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So maybe we could just all look at the calendar, all of us.
Right.
You know, we've voted.
Didn't occur, we could have had it tomorrow night or even Monday, because when we were going back and forth, it was Monday or Tuesday.
Well, it was Monday, Sunday.
Monday would be bad too, yeah.
Next week is Yom Kippur.
Yeah, that I know, one of my brother most for dinner.
Uh, sometime next week.
Can we look at it?
Well, we didn't have a meeting yet, did we?
Oh.
Not yet.
Okay.
Your next week will be October.
I just wanted to make sure, I think, yeah, not next week.
I thought Yom Kippur is in October.
Yeah, Yom Kippur is next week, and then your meeting is two weeks from now.
Right.
Okay.
Your cover next week.
Okay, so it's the end of next week, Yom Kippur?
It's on a Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. But then it was in October. Thank you for...
Well, thank you for... I know, I blame myself as well, I just think it's good to...
No, I thought of that 100%.
Yeah.
Because there was limited, less traffic on the market.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, now I feel bad.
Well, I mean, as long as we do things differently moving forward, I think it's nothing to feel bad about. We can't, I mean, we can't change what happened, but, um...
Okay. Yeah. We have the Rockwell Contract, Rockwell Contract, to discuss for Harvest Festival. She wanted that signed. Some questions about that.
Like, forty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Is this half? The twenty-two-fifties half? The whole thing?
Yeah, let's see. Total price probably twenty-two-fifty.
All right, and it comes out of the appropriation for the Harvest Festival?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All right. Okay. Passes unanimously, I guess.
Well, just...
Yeah, I know, we're supposed to do... Yeah, I know, and they just...
Well, you just had a motion in a second.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, you're right.
So it's unanimous?
Unanimous. And then we run up discussion on other contracts that may come before us between now and the Harvest Festival. Where I have the authority to sign them, providing that funds are available or not. Otherwise, I guess we can call special meetings if we have to.
If it's within the budget and it's under the bid limit, quote limit, or you get the quotes, then you shouldn't have to come back to us for those.
Is this the list?
No, no, those are tabulations for the bids.
Okay.
We don't have a li... I'm saying, I'm anticipating other contracts may come up.
Okay.
In this order of magnitude or less typically?
I don't know, this is my first rodeo, so it could be... And I asked Nicole if she had anything, she said not at the moment, but she's anticipating other contracts to come forward.
So, so you're, you're, okay, I see, so we're talking about stuff that could come in from now into, in the next couple of weeks?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
All related to the Harvest Festival?
Harvest Festival, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think any of them are going to be, you know, twenty thousand dollars.
No, no, if they were, right. Right.
Budget.
No, I'm anticipating if anything, it'd be along this magnitude or less, but...
So may I offer some context on that?
Yeah.
Um, the budget for the Harvest Festival is twenty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, um, and last year, the most expensive item for, um, the Harvest Festival was the labor for DPW and the constables. Which was like fifty-six...
Which are not contracts, yeah.
Which are not contracts, which is fifty-six hundred dollars. Everything else was forty-five hundred dollars or less.
Okay.
I know she's...
For any individual vendor.
Yeah, right, I know she's looking for a face painter now. I don't know if this would be a contract with that, but that's probably between five hundred and a thousand dollars or something like that.
Okay, I move that the first election be authorized to sign contracts for the Harvest Festival within appropriations and, um, within the bid limits and quote limits.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, then we've got, um, three bidder awards. The first one is for DeGenaro Services. It was public bid twenty-five dash zero-three for, um, equipment maintenance and repairs. They're the only bidder on this one.
I know he signed the checks for them, I can't... Does anybody know whether their bid price is higher or lower or the same?
It's right, it's right in line with what you know.
He just bid his own rate. All right, since they're the only bidder, um, definitely should go with them.
So I recommend that we go with them.
This, it seems like a reasonable bid to you?
Yeah, like I said, their price is right in line with what they charge.
Okay.
It goes up, I think, ten dollars next year and ten dollars a year after.
It's a three-year.
It's a three-year, three-year with two options.
Yeah, so, it'll be locked in for up to five years.
How many?
It's a three-year bid with two optional renewals.
Okay.
So we can go up to five years with them. The fourth and fifth year, we have a third-year crisis. Going to be a structure.
Do we make a motion on this one yet?
We can make a motion on the individual bids or altogether. Yeah, well, I'll give it to individual bid. So we have a motion to approve bid twenty-five dash zero-three.
Yeah, award to DeGenaro Services.
And should we, should we, oh, there's, no, well, a couple people are on, should we tell them what the bid is for?
Vehicle repair.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next bid... Yeah, why don't you talk about it down?
The next bid is the emergency tree removal bid. That'll be in case of a hurricane, tornado, ice storm, whatever, you know, declare an emergency or whatever, I guess whatever would be declared emergency. We went out to bid for that, same thing, three years with two years of options. We had, we had three bidders, one bid is incomplete.
Which one?
Jim's Landscape, Tree and Landscape, he did not bid on the, um, one of the four items, so we couldn't, we couldn't accept all bid. So we had two other bids, one was Palo Tree Services of Orange and Capasso Landscaping and Trees in Bethany. Palo was the low bidder by about eight percent over Capasso, so...
Yeah, and then you got this weighted average, which I thought Jim's was the low bid, but that's because...
It was incomplete.
But that's because they were doing the math on only three line items.
Right, right.
Of course it's going to be long.
So the weighted one, Palo, no, I didn't, I spoke to my head, I've never dealt with Palo before, they're, they're out of Orange, and you did, you guys used Palo?
Yeah, they didn't, they're not the current contractor, they didn't do it last year, but the previous two years, they were the low bidder, the town was happy with it.
For emergency tree removal.
And, and I think they won both the tree list and the hourly...
Tree list, they were, they, well, that's next. Okay. Like I said, they're, they're, in emergency, I mean, Orange is close, would have been nice to go with Bethany, but Orange is close.
Can I ask, um, I'm just wondering, I didn't think to ask with the last one, but, um, why, why, why should, why are we doing this now?
Well, we're in the middle of hurricane season, so we wanted to get the emergency tree to... In case a hurricane comes up, whatever, whatever storm. But this way, it doesn't jeopardize federal funding, if it's a, an emergency declared, we have a bid in place.
Okay.
FEMA, yeah, FEMA won't pay, has a hard time paying if there's no actual bid in place.
Is there, um, did we have a previous contract like this?
No.
No. No, and it's my understanding that we lost money because...
Yeah.
We missed the route. Before my time and whatever, it was always, it was, it was rotational. Like the last ice storm last year, what was the ice storm last year? Last year, it wasn't that big ice storm we had, and all the tree guys in town just dropped what they were doing and came to work.
But they can, they can still do that.
If Palo agrees.
Oh, or if he can't keep...
If we, well, we, we just continue to sit here, it's two hours to get here, and if you can't man it, you can't get...
No, no, what I'm saying, if there's, um...
Oh, if it's a tornado on there.
If there's four weeks of work to clear the roads...
Yes.
He's going to be as busy as he can be, you can bring in others, and if you think you're getting FEMA funding, I think it's within like three days, you gotta get at least quotes or something. But for the first couple of days, you can just do...
I mean, that's why, like I say, you know, Capasso was right in town, but they were, like I say, they were weighted, they were eight percent higher.
And the other thing, as you're talking, I'm thinking about, the other thing that we possibly do is award the primary contract to Palo and use Capasso as a backup, providing he agrees to do it. In case of an emergency, you might have a good point, if there's a real lot of work to do, if Capasso can't, I mean, if Palo can't handle it all, then...
Or same thing, if it's a crazy ice storm, you can't get here from Orange.
Right. But that way, we have Capasso under a bid, and I don't think that would jeopardize federal funding.
Yeah. So what have we done in the past? When there's a storm, we just scramble and get whoever's available?
Well, when there's a storm, we have enough of a relationship with the local guys that they just come.
Right.
You know, they're here within an hour, half an hour, whatever, and just work till it's done.
FEMA has changed some of their guidelines, and unless you have a bid in place for an emergency tree removal, they do not have to reimburse the town for any work on tree removal.
And that would stop the local guys saying, "No, I'll do it, eight hundred bucks an hour." And FEMA's going to say, "No, at least with a bid, it's, you know, they know the price is whatever, fair standard," whatever.
That makes sense.
I'm fine with that, is Capasso all set with, uh, there were a couple of years ago, there were some zoning issues?
That I don't know.
No, they're good, they're good. They're good, there was taxes, she said, "Yeah, talk to Lena and talk to the tax collectors, Capasso's able to work."
So I guess then, I don't know whether we want to award it to both companies, Capasso as a backup, or just award it to Palo. Let's...
I would just do Palo. And I think if you really, if you really get a disaster, you can hire other contractors. You know, you'll have to get, you can hire them, you know, for a couple of days, just unvoice, you know, just the verbals, and then you have to get at least some quotes and...
Because we gave Palo two hours to respond in an emergency. So if they don't respond within two hours, then we were able to call anybody. But it's nice to have a backup for FEMA, so...
Yeah.
But like I say, if it's a tornado, we're going to have everybody in town working. Because last time, it was a month's work to clean up for all the crews in town.
I would just go with one, I mean, Orange is used as one. Except, except during, uh, ISI, yes, like, we use two contractors.
All right, so a motion, or...
I'll move to, um, uh, award the bid to the Palo Landscaping Tree Removal, um, out of Orange.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I think I'm going one.
All right, are you going to next one down?
Okay, the next one is a tree, tree removal bid. We put together, our tree ward, we put together a list of eighteen to twenty trees, I think I've got, I've got my head, um, for trees that have to be removed, and we sent it up to bid, and, um, again, I'd like to recommend Jim's Landscaping and Tree Services, they were the low bidder. We had to give four or five bids on that one.
How many trees are there?
There's eighteen to twenty.
Okay.
Depends on the tree too.
Right.
You know, some, some monsters that are...
Well, yeah, they're all tagged, and we gave a list, in the bid, there was a list of, you know, Spirit Road by Mailbox Twelve, and, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever.
So how were the trees identified?
Tree ward.
Okay.
Yeah, Seth identified the trees and get down the list.
Dead or dying or...
Yeah, these are ones that really have to come out.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot more in the future, because of the ash and birch. A lot of bad stuff going on.
There's no concern that he's significantly lower than the other bidders?
Jimmy Jimmy's always consistent.
Okay.
And he does nice work.
He does, yeah. He's starting, he's starting work at my house.
And the thing is, Jimmy's a small operation, he's got enough crews, enough, enough guys to do what we're asking him to do. But he doesn't have a, you know, five thousand square foot building and fifteen trucks on the road, so he's unable to keep his prices down.
Yeah, he did great work for us.
Good, that's good, yeah.
My turn. Will we award the, uh, tree removal list work, um, to Jim's Landscaping and Tree Removal?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Discussing impossible action for a bid waiver for one-on-one Russell Road dumpsters. We'll talk about that.
So, one-on-one Russell Road, as you guys know, we, we provided the domain, it's an abandoned house, demolished house, that's going to be demolished, we're in the process of it.
In the process, yeah.
We're in the process of taking this. Okay, so...
When do we expect it to be done?
So the thirty-day, the thirty-five day window to file the return of service is, uh, September twenty-sixth, so I'm going to file the return of service on, uh, Monday, the twenty-ninth. And, uh, then, the way the statute is written, the clerk shall, uh, within a reasonable time thereafter, without delay, whatever that means...
It means whatever you want to say.
Uh, shall issue the certificate of taking. So, uh, at a, within a reasonable period of time following Mondays, the twenty-ninth, without delay, the clerk shall issue the certificate of taking. Once that's issued, we record on the land records and we are the owner.
So, so we're anticipating to get this work done in the middle of October? Okay? Unless the clerk takes three weeks to sign.
Well, I'll follow up if we don't get...
So, the issue that we're going to have, we went out to bid in two thousand and three. I, I had gotten three quotes to demo, to demo the building.
Two thousand and twenty-three. Twenty-three, not two thousand and thirty.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
This is, this is a, this is a long drawn out... We got three bids, we got three bids for the demolition, one was seventy-three thousand, one was ninety-eight hundred, and one was ten thousand, two hundred. They since went up, two of them, this Triple J out of Reading, kept the same price and everything was complete, so for ten thousand dollars, ten thousand, two hundred dollars, they're good, okay? The dumpsters, on the other hand, might, might be an issue, we're not sure. Their best guess was three dumpsters full of material. The problem is, the house has asbestos in it, but they had this asbestos guy go in there in two thousand and twenty-three, and almost fell through the floor. So he declared the entire house hot because we can't get in there to clean it. Okay? So the entire house has to be treated as, as asbestos, okay? So, the way to dump them, so their, the best guess of these three contractors was roughly three dumpsters full of material.
And all it is, is they put a liner in it if it's asbestos?
Double liner, take the house, boom, 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 house is gone, they're going to stove in the septic system, they're going to demolish the house, implode and bury the foundation, backfill and grade all disturbed areas. So basically, we'll have a nice, fairly leveled, fairly clean piece of property. So the way the dumpsters are going to work, um, I got three quotes, Red Technologies, it's twenty-nine, twenty-five, a dumpster for ten ton. You could put up to eighteen ton in the dumpster, okay? It's an additional two hundred dollars a ton, so theoretically, a dumpster could be up to five grand. Okay, at the most, a dumpster's five grand, okay? Their best guess is three dumpsters, so fifteen thousand dollars, okay? The other two quotes I got were higher, and there was, one of them had bad contingencies, and they were going to... If it was over this, they were going to bring it back and charge us money and that, anyway. So Red Technologies and everybody I spoke to, they're out of Portland, and they said they're the, they're the one to use anyway. Okay? So the problem, the problem that could arise is what if it's four dumpsters? So now it's twenty thousand, twenty thousand, two hundred dollars or whatever. According to our rules, we have to go out to seal bid for anything over twenty thousand dollars. Unless you guys waive the...
You want us to waive the bids and go with the quotes instead?
Yes, because just in case, I mean, best, best guess, it's going to be under fifteen grand.
Okay.
But...
Worst case is you're at the five, twenty.
They're all looking at a house that's fallen down and saying, "Oh, yeah, three dumpsters," well, it could be four dumpsters, you know?
All right.
But either way, they're the lowest bidder.
Well, we got the lowest quota, so...
Close quarter.
It's, we, we, and, and if, the reason we didn't wait until October is because if we want to put out a bid, we'll get it done sooner rather than...
Right.
Right.
Yeah, well, if you already have gotten other prices, I mean, that's the main thing, like, you got some high ones, right?
Yeah.
And if you...
Well, high ones for, for the demolition, yeah, the dumpsters were fairly close.
Okay.
For instance, USA was like, okay, so Red Technologies was twenty-five hundred for ten ton, USA was three thousand for eight ton, so they're quite a bit higher.
Are any of them have, or do they all have, like, expertise in dealing with asbestos?
This, yeah, this is what they do.
Okay, yeah, okay.
They bring the dumpster, they double line it with plastic, and they take, they take it away, they test it, they sign the state certifications and all that other stuff.
Okay.
Trans waste was pretty much the same price, it was twenty-five fifty for eight ton or twenty-five fifty for ten ton. But trans waste, if the dumpster went over eighteen ton, they were going to bring it back to the job site, make us empty it, and charge us a thousand dollars.
Sounds terrible.
Well, and again, you're rolling the dice, because the guy in the machine, it's a cinder block house.
Right.
So he's going like this, and all of a sudden, it's nineteen ton, it costs us an extra fifteen. These people said, Red Technologies said, you know, unless you bring us a thirty-ton dumpster, if it's a little, you know, they charge, it's two hundred dollars an extra ton, so...
Sounds terrible.
And then we do have, I believe, thirty thousand dollars even.
Thirty thousand was held back from the purchase price.
Correct.
To cover the remediation expense.
Right, so we have twenty thousand, we have nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars to cover dumpsters, and if it goes over that, we have to go to contingency or whatever, but our best guess was fifteen thousand.
Okay, so you may not need the waiver, but...
Right.
We might not, but if, if, we're not going to know until we're done with the project.
They're going to know until you're in the middle of it.
Right, and then...
Do you have a recommendation on...
I recommend is Red Technologies.
Okay.
Because like I said, they are the, the least expensive, and from everybody I talked to, all the different companies that use asbestos dumpsters, that they're, they're the ones to deal with. Funny, I called USA, USA Trash, and I spoke to a gentleman by the name of Dennis. Then I called All America. Hold on a minute. Hello, this is Dennis.
Same address?
Same guy.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Same guy, I said, "Can I just talk to you?" He goes, "Yeah." He goes, "Yeah, we're kind of sister company."
Did he give you a better price? Return junior mine. Uh, I move that we, um, waive bids and award to Red Technologies...
Red Technologies, so Portland.
Based on its quote.
Okay.
Oh, second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If our motions are ever not clear, you just have to tell us.
Yeah.
Actually, if anything's not clear, just, you know, say, really, really...
Yeah.
Like, the best court reporters are the ones who interrupt, because then they'll be...
What'd you say?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, discuss an impossible action approval of EAP, um, program contract.
Do we have a current contractor, or is this our current contractor?
I believe it is, yes.
So it's expiring?
They're annual renewals.
It's, it's an annual, yeah, this, this was from, obviously, fallout from some of the, um, issues that we were having. So we put in place an employee assistance program for part-time workers, because they don't, they're not covered under our insurance. So this takes care of any types of mental health, um, you know, if they have questions about, you know, something they might need medically or anything like that, it offers several, uh, sessions for them to be able to do that.
So are full-time employees eligible?
They, they can, but, but our, our insurance covers all of those things, so typically, you know, they go through to our insurance, but for those that don't have insurance, this is, was an opportunity for them, and it also included all of the, um, summer camp counselors as well, so...
And it started, what, what started September?
It was September of last year, which is why it's September for, normally we have everything on July, but since we started late, this contract starts late.
So does it end September thirtieth or...
It's, it was actually August thirtieth, uh, September, I think they had the date on here that they wanted it back, was September ninth. But they sent, I think that was the date on it, somewhere around there.
Oh, right.
But I called them and let them know, obviously, that we had a different process that needed to be approved, so...
Would, would you rather have it on a fiscal year basis, and before we sign it, you can adjust it?
It, it honestly, I mean, they, they send it normally in August, so it doesn't really matter, because we have, we can pay it till July one anyway, so it doesn't really matter, uh, on that one, that contract.
I don't catch it, um, I was good, you brought it, but I don't know that you have to, since it's only thirty-five hundred dollars if it's in the budget, but...
No, it's still an agreement, so, I mean...
Yes, you're right. Great, forgot.
You know, Bob, after you're in a cap, not getting any contracts, big or small, it's kind of nice to...
Well, all contracts need to come to a...
We haven't, we didn't get any though, Ben, so we don't have to have a conversation again.
No.
We didn't get any.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So...
That's fine, then, uh, I move approval of the Solutions EAP. The agreement between Bethany and Behavioral Health, Connecticut, DBA Solutions EAP.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, discussion impossible action for the approval of extension on leasing agreement through RWA along school buses to turn around on Brown's Road.
So this is the turnaround that's been there for twenty years or so?
Yeah.
And just extending it for another five?
So can someone explain what's going on? I was like trying to beat and follow, but...
The, uh, the water company's not allowed to sell... I'm giving overly simple, they're not allowed to sell land without going to the legislature, so it's a lot easier for them to give you a permit or permission. And so obviously, they have no, they're, they're in favor of this, but to transfer the property would have taken a lot of effort. So they did it by this revocable license instead of a conveyance. Because watershed land, they're not supposed to sell. And I don't know, there was some correspondence in there about, we could have done a taking or something, but I would have, we didn't care, we didn't care either, so...
And so the bus goes onto the property to be able to go back down?
So this allowed the town to build a turnaround so they could, because they, they abandoned a portion of the roads that would have just ended. And there are, well, there have been kids down there, and I don't know if there are currently.
Yeah.
I think the bus does go down there, so...
Yeah, but I mean, you know, if there aren't now, there will be in the future, and that was the main reason, plus the, otherwise, plows got a, you got to put a really small plow down there and ask to turn around in somebody's driveway, or... So it's nothing new, it's just, uh, every five years, we extend it, and then this is the last time, but I guess redoing the agreement.
Yeah.
So, how many extensions have there been? I know it's said in there somewhere.
Four, you can, it was, it was for five years, and then you get up to four extensions, so twenty-five years.
Okay. So I would, I'll move to, um, to, uh, do another extension and, um, and enter into the lease agreement with the, is it the, it's the water authority?
Yeah, regional water.
Yeah, regional water authority. So this would be the last extension?
Yeah.
It's, but it, it seems to be built into the document that... But I'm sure they, if they were in favor, they just drafted a new document.
Right, a new lease.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Okay.
All righty. Discussion on possible action to the approval of moving forward with U.R. Communities' Care Program and Approval of First Election to Sign a Finalized Contract. This is a... This is a, we're anticipating this to be a no-cost, um, program to the town. And trying to get all, um, donations to fund this. It costs about a hundred dollars, it does cost, it's just a hundred dollars per person to sign up for this. But that's, that sign up is good for life, there's no renewal fees or anything like that. And what it does is it mirrors or marries, um, seniors and disabled people with volunteers. So that they can, you know, help them, provide services, you know, taking out the garbage, you know, snowblowing their driveway, shoveling walkways, grocery shopping, things like that. So it's just a, a community-based effort to help seniors and disabled people.
And who do you think would be making the donation?
We reached out to the Lions Club, um, and individuals, businesses, whoever wants to, to really donate. Uh, Robin said she had, she, she spoke to a few people, and she has like four hundred dollars committed so far. If we, if we move forward with it.
There's a question, what's the donation for us? It's a hundred dollars for an elderly person to sign up, it costs them a hundred bucks?
It, it, it costs a hundred dollars to sign up recipients and volunteers. And they do background checks, um, and they run the software and everything else, and it's a one-time fee per person.
Okay, so if we wanted to donate a hundred or a couple hundred dollars?
Yeah, you could donate, and if you wanted to volunteer, you would, um.
I'll be on, I'll be on the other.
You're the receiving this.
But if you wanted to volunteer for, to help somebody, you know.
Or I can donate, whatever, it'll be something in the paper or something, if you guys approve that.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, when I saw this, I was surprised I'd never heard of them, because I've been doing work around disability on one, some level. Or another for more than twenty years, so I was sort of surprised that I had never heard of them, but it sounds, it sounds like a good program.
Right, and, you know, I'm anticipating, well, hopefully, high school kids on community service will sign up and. You know, and try and, you know, help, so, um, yeah.
So how would people, how are people gonna know?
Well.
Because like, you know, it's hard to communicate stuff.
Right, we'll put something in the bulletin about it. We're hoping to have a table at the Harvest Fest, you know, flyers, and try and get, you know, build awareness there and get people involved. So it's, you spread the word.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We'll post the schools and the campus conferences and all that stuff.
Right, well, yeah, we'll go to Amity. And, and the way it's gonna work is, um, when people sign up, though, Robin or somebody at the town will, we're anticipating, we'll, um. Make sure this fund's available before we approve them. You know, so that we don't have to worry about signing up too many people and not having them to pay for it.
So what does the contract actually look like? Does it?
It should be in here.
I'm just wondering, like, what is it?
It's, it's.
It's, 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 I was confused. And I didn't wanna rewrite what they, what, I think that their document, that this might be new. No, there was a document that purported to be the.
Okay, yeah, there it is.
And it, uh.
I can just put in your updated. I did put the original, because you had made a draft.
Yeah, so what I did is, because there was, it was a very, uh, I'm gonna call it a napkin style contract. I just added a, a line in there that this, this agreement does not, uh, in any way, uh, uh, bind the town to appropriate any funds specifically for this contract.
So is that in here or no?
Yeah, it's supposed to be in here.
Oh, here it is, I got it, got it, thank you.
So, so the underlying sentence I added just to try to add something to tie it to an appropriate, you know, that we don't have to appropriate money for it. But the town could if it wanted to.
Right.
But I, I, I went online, and there are a number of other communities that are signed up for this, uh, but I could not find any contracts that those communities entered into.
Right.
And, uh, you know, I didn't know, without redrafting the whole thing into something that would be a more of a contract that I'd be accustomed to. You know, I was trying to go with what they sent over to us.
Which is just like a letter agreement?
It's kinda like an MOU.
Yep.
So, according to the terms now, it does, we're not committed to any funding?
Right, we, we will support it, but we don't fund it.
So who does the, you know, background checks?
You, you are.
They do all that?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, that, that's what, what the fee covers, that and the website.
It sounds like, like a good program to me.
Yeah, we thought it did. I've been, uh, following them for a while, and one of my goals when I retired was to volunteer with them.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. So when I retire, I'm gonna volunteer.
When you retire, you might be, uh, getting the services. My turn or your turn, I can't remember.
I think it's your turn, I don't remember.
Move that we authorize first electmen to sign the, uh, agreement with UR Community Cares.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we got, uh, discussion and possible action for the approval of cameras for senior buses. That's, uh, anticipated the cost of about seven thousand, is that seven thousand dollars?
Uh, yes, there's an addition, if we go with the highest bidder, there's a little bit of additional fee for, um, some wifi pieces if we wanna add any more of that, but we don't have to. So yes, it would be right around seven thousand dollars.
So how did this come up? I'm just curious.
The safety issues, um, apparently, uh, there was, there was a side swipe accident on one, we've got no record of it. You know, perhaps we're worried about people falling, and things like that, so it's really a safety concern for us.
So where would the cameras be? Like, inside the bus? Like, I'm just trying to picture.
There's, there's some visuals here, but there, there's an internal and external, and then one for the, um, the front showing like when they're driving out, um.
Thank you. Did you see this, Rob?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, okay. Yeah, that's. But that's how. Oh, sure, yeah.
Is our bus fairly new or is it old?
No, it's brand new.
So we'll be, you'll be, it'll have audio as well, right? Is that right? It looks like.
I, I think so.
Yeah.
They, there's an audio component, I think that's something the town would wanna decide whether or not you wanna actually record interior conversations on the bus. That's, that would be a town decision policy.
If, if you decide to have the interior video, you should have a sign that posts that there's interior audio.
And do you have a sign that posts that someone's being recorded?
Well, I would, I would recommend to have that. You know, the exterior, you don't have to worry about.
Right.
But every car now has a, you know, has cameras all over the place.
Yeah.
You know, but if it's interior, you should have just a sign that there's, uh.
My car has a camera from above now.
Yeah, yeah, it's everywhere.
Yeah, it's crazy.
This seem like a lot of money. Is it coming out of the senior, uh, senior budget or how is it being paid for?
That is yet to be determined, but I would propose, I would suggest that it comes out of the senior bus line. For the, the vehicle maintenance for the senior bus would be my recommendation where the, where it should be funded from.
Which, which contract are you recommending?
I do not know yet. I have.
Yeah, these just came in, so there's, there's one that's really, really low, but, but it's literally like, uh, here's your cameras and self-install.
Right.
So maybe that's not the right way to go. Um, and then there's one that's for six thousand dollars, there's one for seven thousand dollars. The Safely, I, I hope I have this right, I mean, I talked to, to Robin about it, the, uh, what's the other one, I'm missing one.
I thought we gave them all back.
One more. Uh, but there's, I believe Safely is the one that through Greater New Haven Transit. And then there's, what's the other one that's?
There's, there's, yeah, there's Safe.
There should be one that's for Provision. The Angel Trax?
No, it's not the Angel Trax.
That's the cheap one. Provision, I do know. Provision is the one that B and B has for their buses. So we have two options that we can go and look and see, you know, how they're utilizing it, how they're downloading it, all the things. So, um, I, I personally would be an advocate for one of those two, um, and Robin is planning on setting up some arrangements to go and check those out.
So, so until we see how they operate, we do not have a recommendation as to which company to go with?
Probably just not the self-install, right?
Not so. I thought it said about seven thousand, seven thousand. Yeah, right. Uh, I need, this one's six, the Provision was a little over, uh, it was, uh, six thousand one hundred and fifty-three. Um, and then this one, like I said, is seven thousand, um.
Right, it'd be interesting to know what the difference, differences are, yeah.
So you're looking for a motion to, um, approve up to a certain amount to, uh, is contracted to be determined, or?
Could we just get an update at the next meeting?
If the emergency will be.
Yeah, it's not an emergency.
Uh, we don't know how long it's gonna take to order, that's the only thing. So when I talked to Dave about this, they said, he said that it might take almost two months to get cameras in. So depending on, you know, how, so right now, we have the buses running on Fridays, and we have one bus driver. Um, and the idea was, before we engage in hiring another bus driver, let's make sure we have the policies and procedures and everything in place, along with the cameras. So if we wanna open that up to more passengers, um, we would want the cameras in the, in the buses. So, um, I don't, I don't know how long these would take to come in. We haven't gotten that far yet. This would be more or less to move forward to allow us to kind of engage in that, because I'm assuming it goes to the Board of Finance after here.
I mean, my, my preference would be to get more information about the two options. I don't, I don't really see this as an emergency. We've, we've driven the van for years, for cameras.
Because what, is the ask, is the ask for you to continue the process of exploring which company to go with? Or is it, like, is this a good idea in general? Uh, like, because I.
Yes, the ask is, would the Board of Selectmen endorse putting cameras in the senior bus?
And then you come back, then you come back with, this is our recommendation of which company to go with.
Quite, because they need to solidify the funds, so we may, I now have to wait for Board of Finance to solidify the funds and then come back to the Board of Selectmen. And then they can choose which one they wanna go with, right?
Right, so right now, it's just, do you think this is a good idea or not? So, you know, uh, you're not, you're not approving a contract, that contract would be presented to you based on a recommendation at a future meeting. This is just to advance the process for you to, well, because first, you have to decide which company you wanna go with. You're gonna explore these two companies.
Right, there's two, there's two, right, Human Services is gonna be helling this.
Right.
Um.
I don't mean you.
Right, right, well, I just.
Right, because then, then you come back with a recommendation, then wouldn't you go to the Board of Finance after that, or do you go to Board, Board of Finance?
That is a great question for you, so I know that things have gone both ways. Um, I think we're just trying to be on the up and up with all of our processes right now, so.
Well, I would think it would, once we choose a company, um, and get a contract, we come back to us and then to the Board of Finance for fund, for funding.
I mean, technically, if you're paying for it out of the line item, you don't have to ask the Board of Finance.
Well, that's true too.
But you tell them, but.
So what's likely to happen with this, although it belongs in the currently funded, um, transportation line. It was not an anticipated thing, but we should still pay it up, that, and that line will be over, at which point we will transfer from.
Oh, okay, I thought, I thought you were saying there was enough, or it's not.
No, no, it would, that's the line that it would make, that it would be funded from, but it would prop, it will require the Board of Finance to. Transfer additional funds into that line at some point in the, in this fiscal year, yes. It's really hard not to have any extra money in any lines because we have contingency.
So do you know what line, um, item might be used to transfer the funds?
It would, it would come from contingency. What we, because contingency is used for non-budgeted expenses that come up during the year, and this would fall under that category. To, to explain what that's doing, that's a larger contingency number than, um. Than most towns would carry. The reason, what we've done is tried to reduce the budget, um, the allowed budget for, for line items. So that we don't encourage it all to be spent.
That's good, yeah.
Yeah. And consequently, we have a fairly robust contingency because we're pretty sure, you know, that, at least twenty percent, maybe twenty-five percent. Will at some point need an adjustment, but meanwhile, they won't just spend because there's money there.
So how much is in the line item right now, the contingency?
The contingence, the contingency budget for this fiscal year is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The line, the vehicle maintenance for the senior bus is approximately five thousand dollars. Because it is a new bus, we cut that line almost in half from last year to this year.
So you wouldn't even have enough money to.
No, there is not, no, there is not.
So we would have to go to the Board of Finance first, rather than at some point down the line.
At some point.
Well, when we wanna enter into the contract and buy these, we need to go to the Board of Finance to get the money. Or, right.
Yeah, well, you would, you would, you would enter, you would approve to enter into the contract, right, and then they would have to fund it.
Right.
What do you think?
I, I don't.
I think they're just asking us, oh, do we recommend the concept at this point?
Right, but if you move the process forward, what, will there, is any money gonna be spent, or?
No, no.
Okay.
No, it's, it's just allowing them to get to the point of deciding which of their two vendors they wanna go with, and then they'd have to come back for your approval to enter into one of those vendors.
Or you could just authorize that now, knowing what the dollar amount range is to save, get things done more quickly.
Right, you could do that also. You could authorize them to enter a contract with one of the two vendors not to exceed. If you were comfortable with that. But if you'd rather see the contract with its terms, then you would, you know, go with the former process.
I'm just wondering, um, do, does anyone know whether fans in surrounding towns have cameras, like Orange or?
My wife does, works for B and B, she's a tire in office or whatever, every one of their vehicles has, the small buses, the big buses, the transport vans. Every, every vehicle has at least three cameras, and they use, I don't know, this Provision.
Right, right. What about, um, other towns, like senior buses and stuff?
I don't know, I could find out.
Yeah, all of the, all of them. I'm just, I'm just thinking about.
Well, Greater New Haven Transit, all the senior buses have.
So part of it too, just so you know, is that we have like a bus driver that's out there, and we don't have anybody else that monitors the bus, right? There's nobody on there to help him. He's responsible of putting somebody on like a wheelchair lift and putting it on the bus and all of those pieces. And there's, there's no one else that's staff member that is with him out in the community, right? And so it kind of protects him, it protects the people on the bus.
And in the event of an issue, someone falling out of a wheelchair or something like that, you have cameras that would see what, was it the employee's fault or not, so could protect the town.
Side street where they're parking in between two cars in order to put the lift down, and I mean, when I talked to the bus driver, he was saying like, sometimes it's really hard, like, he has to literally double park and then put it in between two cars. So that way, no one can say, you know, he scratched anything or did anything, or. so that way no one can say, you know, he scratched anything or did anything, or those types of things.
What do you think, Ben?
So I think unless we're just against the concept, we should let them go ahead and.
I'm not against the concept at all.
Make a selection and then come back to us and then.
Yeah, I'm not against the concept at all, I see the safety, the benefits on all sides of this. I was just kind of trying to think about other vehicles that we have in town, or do we need cameras on other vehicles?
That's a good question.
You know, I was just kind of thinking about, you know, bigger picture in terms of, you know, helping to make the decision of this one thing.
Well, it can't hurt them to get, to do further research, select what their preferred vendor is and come back with that, with the, you know, present the quotes in two weeks or whenever it's ready.
Right, I mean, I guess I would just say that the two, not the other one, right? Because it.
We can try and install it if we want, we have a party.
I mean, the senior ones.
Right, yeah, exactly.
And I guess with cameras, I'd probably say this at the next meeting, but with cameras, they're really valuable, right? When something happens, but also there's also a value in some level of monitoring, you know? I really think, I'm not saying someone has to sit there and look at, you know, because no one has time for that, but I think some random review of little clips here and there, on a staggered timeframe, could be a good thing.
I know, the way these Provisions ones work, I'm sure this one does the same thing, there's either a chip in the camera itself that you can pull, or just leave and let it run, you know, 30 days and it records over itself or whatever. Some of the buses, now when they pull into the lot, it automatically downloads out to the computer. So you can sit there and watch today's drive.
And just, I'm not suggesting anyone should sit and watch a full day's, you know, I'm not saying that at all, I just think.
It's there just in case though.
Right, there just in case usually means I'll look at it if something happened. But I do think there's a value in.
Spot checks.
Spot checks, I do.
I think that's the idea behind it, is for all kinds of purposes, because they're, you know, to kind of, that would be on Human Services, but yes.
Okay.
So the motion of some sort.
Do you need it? Is there any objection, if there's no objection to them, then there's.
That's what I was gonna say, just if everyone unanimously is in favor of proceedings.
I don't know if you need an actual motion.
Yeah, there's no.
So one was Provision, what was the other one?
It's Provision and Safe Fleet.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So ask if anyone has any objections.
Let the American reflect any objections now.
I know Gina doesn't, do you have any objections? Okay. All right. Then we'll proceed with that project. Okay, discussing the possible action for the early voting grants. We just got an update on that today, so the refund amount is $6,800 and something.
Oh, that's more than anticipated, right?
Yeah, we were anticipating $5,000, I think it brought up this, but I don't remember.
What is it, $6,800?
Do you remember?
No, I do not.
It's okay.
Yeah, it was.
I think it's $1,800 more.
Oh, you don't have to get up just for that.
I think it is $68 and change, but.
Yeah.
So we just have to authorize?
Yeah, $6,828 to me.
Right, to sign the grant application. I think they'll want it back by September 30th.
Let's send it in, I don't know.
Right, exactly.
It would be a motion to authorize the first election to sign the grant agreement related to.
That's the new amount.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. And a motion to move through executive session in accordance with general statutes, yada, 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 with pullman, pullman, common negotiations.
Is it your motion?
Oh, yeah.
Second, second, I'll second your motion.
Do you want to invite anyone or just the three of us?
No, just the three of us.
You want your lawyer?
No, the lawyer, yes. The blood, the blood sample, you're turning.
Okay, bye, we're done.
I was gonna say, if you don't.
So we're out of executive session and we're going to, we don't have any, any, any motions or anything to decide on.
Motion to adjourn.
So motion to adjourn?
Second.
Everyone?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Alright.
So I